Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting, April 26, 2016. I thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Here.
Mayor Duane.
Here. Frank Hedley, would you please, in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance, one flag, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, infinite, just so
We have a few announcements this evening. First of all, Operation Clean Sweep will be held on Saturday, May 7th, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. at San Bruno City Park. You can register at www.sanbruno.ca.gov. Irene, would you like to say anything?
I would, thank you. There's also a waiver form on that website, and if you sign it and print it out, you won't have to stand in line as long. And we are looking very forward to having a lot of people there. We have a lot of places in San Bruno to clean up, so we hope to see you there. And I just want to say, if you can't make it, please consider cleaning up your own area and maybe helping a neighbor, so we'll try to get San Bruno looking as well as it can be. Thank you.
Good. I have an announcement that's not actually on the agenda, but I'd like to read it anyway. The Society of Western Artists will be presenting an international baccalaureate art show hosted by the San Bruno Culture and Arts Commission, May 6th to the 14th, at the Society of Western Artists Fine Art Center, 527 San Mateo Avenue in San Bruno. The gallery will be open daily from 11:00 till 3:00, except for Sunday. And Saturday, May 14th, from 1:00 to 2:30, the commission will be providing a reception with an awards presentation and a chance to meet the artists. For further information, you can contact Judy Pacini, (650) 737-6084. And that's, if you haven't been down there, it's quite a little shock to see. Our third announcement is, we're going to present a proclamation declaring May National Bicycle Month, and I'd like to read this. Whereas the bicycle is a viable, environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of recreation, and a way to improve health through daily physical activity, and whereas millions of Americans will experience the joys of bicycling during the month of May through social rides, promotional events, educational programs, races, Bike to Work Day, Bike to Shop Day, Bike to School Day, open streets events, trail work days, safe ride promotions, charity events, or just getting out and going for a ride. And whereas San Bruno benefits from the thousands of people from the Bay Area region who are attracted to San Mateo County each year to enjoy bicycling, providing economic health and scenic benefits to citizens of California and the world, and whereas bicycling has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, and to reduce pollution and traffic congestion, and that support for bicycling boosts community spirit and helps increase awareness of bicycling skills to improve traffic safety. And whereas Bike Month aligns with San Bruno's goals to improve health, livability, prosperity, and the environment, and whereas May has been declared National Bike Month for each of the last 60 years since its inception in 1956, and is so again in 2016, and now therefore be it resolved that the members of the San Bruno City Council hereby recognize that starting in the month of May 2016, May will be designated as National Bike Month, and the second week of May as Bike to Work Week. And be it further resolved that the San Bruno City Council urges all who support healthy communities to participate in the bicycle events planned, and urges all road users to share the road safely with bicyclists. And Dave Nigel, I'd like you to accept this. Rico, would you?
Yes, sir.
At the podium.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for the proclamation.
We've got it yet.
What?
We've got it yet. I was not, I'm not that fast.
Oh, oh, you're not going to do it.
No, presented to you.
Thank you.
Please, all yours.
We're very grateful for this recognition and the proclamation. I want to reiterate again, after our report last month, our staff is really exemplary, led by our director, David Weltering, and Paula Bradley and Matt Jones, and we are excited. We have a great committee dedicated. We go to all the activities such as cleanup, day in the park, and Cozy Parade, and day in the park, and we're looking forward to it. We're all very active in Bike to Work, and that's coming up, as you just mentioned, and we'll be stationed at the BART station, and we had between 150 stops and total passengers by 300 bikes on that day. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Dave, and thank you to the commission's boards and committees, especially Bike and Ped, for all that you do for the city. You're a very, very active group. Thank you very much. Presentations. We will receive a presentation this evening on recent and future San Francisco Public Utilities Commission regional water system capital improvements in San Bruno.
Mr. Mayor, as the representatives from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission approach the podium, I just want to give a very brief introduction. Mr. Steve Ritchie, Assistant General Manager of the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, is here to talk to us tonight, not just randomly, because, as you know, the PUC has a very aggressive capital improvement program, some of which has been conducted in San Bruno over the last, particularly the last couple of years. But more specifically, because, as you will recall, one of the major water transmission lines that runs through San Bruno experienced a failure last summer and sent a tremendous amount of water cascading down through our park for the better part of a day. As a result of that failure of that pipe, staff asked for a meeting with the PUC to discuss the state of that line in particular, but the capital infrastructure in San Bruno, to better understand what plans were in place or could be put in place to make sure that such of a thing was highly unlikely to happen again. As it turned out, the PUC reported to us very promptly that, in fact, this line was not programmed for any near-term attention, but as a result of what happened and as a result of their conversation with us and their interest in making sure that their infrastructure is in a much better state of repair, or a state of repair that we can all rely on for the precious commodity that it transports. The PUC has made some adjustments to that program, and so we're actually very pleased to have the opportunity tonight to give you an overview of the program, and in particular, how it affects San Bruno, and not just what kind of construction activity may we anticipate seeing, but the understanding of the PUC's dedication to making sure their infrastructure in and around San Bruno is what we should expect and can rely on. So with that, Mr. Ritchie has a PowerPoint presentation and 10 or 15 minutes of comments for you.
Yeah, Steve Ritchie, Assistant General Manager for, is it on? Do I need to push the button?
No.
Okay. I'll just go right ahead. Assistant General Manager for Water at the PUC. I'm joined tonight by Chris Nelson, who is the manager of our Water Supply and Treatment Division, based in Millbrae, who's responsible for operating the system in the local region here. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for this opportunity to present information on our system and our capital improvement program, particularly as it affects San Bruno tonight. Let's see. Somebody give me a hand. Maybe it didn't get the keys put in. Thanks. Yeah, I'm going to talk about the water system in general, briefly, some of the recent projects that we've been working on with you here in San Bruno, specifically about the pipelines that we have that run through San Bruno, the regional water system transmission lines that run through San Bruno, and specifically, the particular project that we have now basically raised to a much higher elevation, improvements of San Andreas Pipeline Number Two in the system. First, this is a map that I use routinely to show, again, that we're delivering water to 2.6 million customers 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that are shown in the communities outlined in that map, and obviously, San Bruno in the corner there. And the red lines are a stylized version of the transmission system that carries the water to all those customers. But again, this is a responsibility we take extremely seriously to making sure that we're providing our services to everybody constantly, all the time. If I can have the next slide, please. So some recent projects that we've been working on here in San Bruno, the Harry Tracy Water Treatment Plant Improvements up on Crystal Springs Road. That project has just recently successfully been completed. Those are major treatment plant improvements that are part of our water system improvement program, and that was a big project for us in terms of seismic reliability of our system and improving the quality of the water that we deliver out of that plant. We've worked very closely with Connie and the city staff on the groundwater storage and recovery project, jointly with Daily City and Cal Water Service, to make sure that we can develop a system of wells and the ability to store additional water underground in the beautiful loch for underneath us, to make sure that water's available during dry years. So we're getting very close to being able to start kicking off that project. When I say kicking off, actually using wells that are being constructed. Many of the wells are under construction right now. We still have some issues to iron out, and we're aggressively working on those right now. And then the third major effort was Peninsula Pipeline Seismic Upgrade, Phase Two. Long title for basically seismic improvements of certain pipelines, particularly San Andreas Pipeline Number Three, and we were actually working on that pipeline last summer, when unfortunately, we had the failure on San Andreas Pipeline Number Two, which put us in a precarious spot that we were able to work through that I'll talk about a little bit later. But that project in particular, when you're doing a pipeline project, those can be very intrusive on the community. Our contractor did a pretty good job there, and I think we worked well with the community on a lot of the issues that were faced there, because, you know, we know it's important to improve things, but also it's very important to work with the city and the citizens of the city when we're doing those projects, so that we can be a good neighbor, and then certainly not too intrusive when we carry out the necessary work. This is a map that shows the pipelines that cross San Bruno. There are actually five of them that cross San Bruno. If you click forward, there's little red marks that'll mark them. First one are Pipelines Two and Three. They're here in the upper area. We call it the high zone, because it's in the upper elevation area, so two pipelines are up here near Interstate 280. Then down the lower area, we have the Crystal Springs Pipeline, and then the next one is the Sunset Supply Line, and the third is San Andreas Pipeline Number One. So those five pipelines all run through the city here and help provide water to San Bruno here, but then also to the communities north of here, up to and including San Francisco. And I'll walk through the specifics, at least some of the detail on each of those as the slides progress here. We can go to the next one. On the two at higher elevation, San Andreas Number Three is a 66-inch diameter pipe that was constructed in 1982. We sliplined it in the mid-'90s with a 60-inch diameter line. It's constructed with a particular type of material that was good to use at the time, but we have found some challenges with it, so the sliplining was pretty important to make sure that those pipelines would, that pipeline would continue to provide service. And again, we made some seismic crossing improvements on that pipeline just through the recent project. San Andreas Number Two, the one that broke last July, and the one we're going to be working on in the coming years, is a 54-inch diameter pipe, and it was constructed back in 1927-28 timeframe, so it's a much older pipe. It did have segments upgraded at different times with mortar lining and things like that, but, as I'll get to the pipeline discussion later on, we think this pipeline is definitely in need of additional work, and I'm going to talk about exactly where we're going to fix it in the coming years. We go to the next slide. On the lower elevation side, there's the Sunset Supply Line, which is 60-inch pipe, constructed in 1954, and last inspected in 2007, so we've kept up on that pipe. Crystal Springs Number Two is another 60-inch diameter pipeline, constructed in 1937, and it was inspected in 2010, the last time. San Andreas Number One is the smallest of the pipelines and the oldest of the pipelines. It's only a 44-inch line, but it was constructed in 1898. It was relined in 1977, and it's due for an inspection that we're going to be carrying out in 2017. We rate all our pipelines by size, and risk, and age, and a lot of different factors, and actually have them scheduled out over the next 15 years for a variety of inspections. So this one will be inspected in late 2017 at this point. I've actually provided Connie and the staff with some more detailed information on each of these pipelines, so that, you know, we can look at the details with them whenever wanted, but it has a little bit about their construction history and things that have gone on there. So that's, those are the five pipelines that exist, and they serve six turnouts here in San Bruno, so we have six different ways to get you water here, both in the high elevation area and the low elevation area. So if we can go to the next slide. Last year, it was July 27th, and the pipeline broke right up the road there in Hennepin O'Seara Park, and we worked closely with the staff here to ensure that full water service was maintained while emergency and permanent repairs were performed. And when we talk about full water service maintained, we actually let the pipe run and stay full for a while, and it was actually, we lost about 15 million gallons of water, but that was to make sure that pressure stayed up while we got other sources in place to make sure that the community did not have a risk of being without fire service while we made the emergency repairs there. So we had a lot of good, close working relationship with the staff, because once we then were able to close that pipeline off, we needed to jerry-rig around how water was being moved, and that took some real work in cooperation with city staff to make sure that at any time there would never be any risk of water service going out. So we can go to the next slide. We actually replaced 130 feet of pipe, and you can see in the photograph what we did to the parking lot there. It just turned it into a giant washboard. It looks more like the Utopalne River there than anything else. Certainly does look like a parking lot in that. And we actually were able to finally return the park to full public use just about a month ago. We do have still some minor work on the park to be complete by the end of this week, and we'll have the final plantings planned for October 2016, but the park is now available for use again, and we're working with the county on reparation for lost revenue there from the time that the park was closed. But this pipeline break really did open our eyes that this pipeline has some issues with it. We found in this area, as we inspected it, we found the pipeline had deteriorated more than we had anticipated since the last inspection we made of it. So we basically took a look at our capital improvement program and moved money forward in that, in our pipeline, transmission pipeline replacement effort, so this pipeline now is, you know, basically moved to the top of the heap in terms of pipelines that we need to attend to. So if you can go to the next slide, Jimmy. That's where we're talking about the Pipeline Improvements Project, which will entail replacement or possible sliplining of about 1.4 miles in four different segments of the pipe that are approaching their useful life. It's about 2,300 feet along Crystal Springs Road, so that's basically from our treatment plant down to and beyond where the repairs were made in the park, so that section we're going to be working on. About 800 feet parallel to Cortland Drive, next to the San Bruno Chinese Church and San Bruno High School, there's another segment that we are looking at replacing. About 1,500 feet just west of the Bay Hill Shopping Center, need work, either, again, sliplining or replacement. And about a half mile between Interstate 380 and South San Francisco, paralleling to Cherry Avenue, so that would cut under the Golden Gate National Cemetery there. So in total, those four segments look to be about 1.4 miles, and that's the sections that we are starting work on right now to come up with the plans to actually, you know, repair those and replace them potentially. If we can go to the next slide. We've initiated what we call conceptual design and environmental review work, so we have to do the necessary sequel work to be able to replace those sections of line or slipline them. Our target completion is 2019, for having all of that work done, but we'll know more precisely later this year, you know, what the schedule will be as we get through identifying the alternatives and identifying any environmental impacts that we might have to deal with. And with all our other projects, we'll, of course, take steps to mitigate potential public impacts, such as noise, dust, and traffic, which are the most common ones. We expect certainly to coordinate closely with city staff through this effort to ensure, again, no water service disruptions while we're doing the work, and we will definitely make sure that we keep the city and the public informed of our progress on this, because this is an important set of projects for us. And if I can have the last slide, Jimmy. We will be, on the public outreach front, definitely working hard in coordination with the city to make sure that we're notifying all the affected constituents through a variety of channels. We use Nextdoor a lot, direct mailers, email, door hangers, one-on-one meetings, whatever it takes. You know, if we have to walk the neighborhoods just to talk to people, we do that, and I think we've done a good job of that in our water system improvement program, and we expect to keep that up as we deal with the other issues that come up in the system, such as San Andreas Pipeline Two. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have as we move forward on this.
Good. Any questions for Steve? Ken?
Yeah, Steve, you mentioned you inspected or do to inspect pipes. How do you go about that, and how extensive is it?
Well, these pipelines are, and our transmission line are big enough that we actually put people inside the pipeline. In the case of San Andreas Number One, it has to be a pretty small person they put inside the pipeline, because it's only a 44-inch diameter pipe. The others, when they're 60, you know, I can squeeze into those a little bit, although I must say, it takes a certain type of individual to do that work, because you're inside a pipeline, and it's not for everybody. But actually, they go in, they visually inspect it, you know, as crude as it may seem, tapping with a hammer is oftentimes a very useful technique. When you, tink, 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 dong, that's always a good indication that there's something wrong in that section. So it's in careful notes, and oftentimes, you know, we'll take, of course, pictures and video, whatever kind of tools we have available that'll get the job done.
I'm just curious, because there's miles of it, and obviously, you have to shut the water off, and...
Yeah. Well, that's the thing about having the five pipelines. For our system, we always have redundancy.
Okay.
And so when San Andreas Two broke last year, that was a problem, because San Andreas Three was actually out of operation for construction at that time, so that put us in a very precarious spot, and that was not very comfortable. That's why we have five pipelines, so that we've got multiple ways to move water around, so that people will always stay in service.
So we know about some gas lines that have pigs or automatic devices. You can do the same kind of thing with your pipeline, too?
For some pipelines, you can. When you've got mortar lining on the inside, those are not routine devices. We actually have, on the other end of the system up at Hetch Hetchy, they've been working on piloting a device that is, we call it an inline inspection tool. It's kind of like a pig, but it's got a fancier name, and they think they've gotten some good results using that, so we may start to try to use that down here in the Bay Area as well. But currently, we generally just go with the old-fashioned way. One of the things about it is, you certainly, whatever you put in, you have to dewater the pipeline, and so as long as we have to dewater it, we certainly have a lot of confidence in our pipeline inspectors to be able to go in and observe things directly.
Okay. And a little bit of off-subject, but can you give us an update on the potential accessibility of the watershed, Crystal Springs?
Yeah, we have, I'm always ready for that question, because I face it all the time. Well, you know, we have a plan that was in our Alameda watershed, or excuse me, we did one for the Alameda side as well, but for the Peninsula watershed, we did a Peninsula watershed management plan back in 2000, I believe. I think it was, actually, may have been certified in 2001 or so, where we did environmental review of it, and we laid out a plan for progressively adding some trails in the watershed. And so we actually are in design right now of extending the Bay Ridge Trail on the top of the watershed, and we have a plan to actually change our method of allowing people in to be one that is a simple permit thing. Currently, you have to be, in effect, escorted with a docent there, but we're going to try to move to a permit system where you can access the watershed directly. But we had a very limited number of trails, because we felt that struck the appropriate balance of access for recreation and education with potential impacts to the watershed. And I said, that trail's in design right now, and then the Open the Watershed Group approached us and said, "We think everything should be open." And we said, "Well, we think that's too much." And so we currently have two county supervisors in San Francisco who are much more on the more open side than not, so we'll be meeting with lots of different stakeholders, because there are the Open the Watershed stakeholders, but there are also a lot of environmental stakeholders who are much more on the, "Let's not be hasty about this." You know, once you get humans in there, those impacts can start to be irreversible.
Yeah.
So we're trying to strike a balance, so we'll be having a meeting with a lot of those stakeholders in about a month or so, and there's, I think, a resolution urging us to open the watershed that the supervisors have introduced, but have not held any hearings on so far.
Great. Anything else for Steve? Irene?
Thank you for the presentation. It's very informative. Is it possible for us to either link it from our city website or to have it on there? I would say that will be a first introduction to people, what you're going to be doing.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Good. Anything else? Well, I want to thank you, too, for your information and, you know, coming to us and explaining this, and your transparency. I have to get my digs in. It's a lot different than working with the CPUC. So thank you very, very much.
I appreciate that. I don't know how high that bar is, but I appreciate it.
You get your digs in, too. That's good.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Item number five, review of the agenda. Okay. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 12, 2016. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? All right, seeing none, they'll be approved as submitted. The consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented or other accounts on action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Anything on the consent calendar?
To the Chair.
Rico?
Item 7D, please.
All right, 7D.
To the Chair.
Marty?
7E, please.
7E. Okay. Anything else? Action on the remainder?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 7D, adopt a resolution approving amendment, number one, to employment agreement between the City of San Bruno and Constance C. Jackson, the city manager. Rico?
Thank you. On this item, I'm not comfortable with the resolution or amendment, so I will not be supporting it this evening. This afternoon, I did meet with the city manager to let her know my position and reason for my vote this evening. As we know, with performance reviews and/or reviews of any city employee, they're not public information, and I felt that that was the most professional and appropriate manner in which to proceed and to have the good discussion that we had today, but that's the only reason I pulled that.
Okay, thank you. Seven vote. Any action on item D?
Move to approve.
Could I have a comment?
Marty? Yes.
I wanted to discuss why I'm voting the way I am before we come to a vote, and I believe that our city manager is fairly compensated, and it is my understanding that she has received the raises as other staff have over the years. I believe any additional compensation that increases that amount should have specific targets of goals and achievements in order to obtain that additional compensation. I am concerned about the impact that this increase to the, one of the highest-paid employees of our city, how that impact and the message that will give to the rest of our rank-and-file employees of how a large percentage, 9%, 10% rate increase, compared to what they'll be negotiating for in the future. So those reasons are why I cannot support this resolution.
Okay. Anyone else, or action on this item, 7D?
I'd like to ask clarification. I don't believe we're voting on a 9% rate increase.
No.
The forgiveness of the loan pretty much breaks down to 9%.
Okay, but that's totally separate than a salary increase. Salary increase...
Okay. I stand corrected that the $20,000 forgiveness of the home loan, I believe the salary was $220,000, existing currently under 2014, so it's around 9%. $20,000 to...
Okay. Wait a second. One thing is considered a, I would consider it a bonus. It's separate, and it's different from a salary increase. Salary increases are subject to, you know, different tax laws, different retirement things, and other things like that. Bonuses are separate, or considerations of performances that the majority of the council, at least in closed session, felt was appropriate for all the work that Mrs. Jackson has done in the past, so that's one thing. I don't want us to give the impression to the public or our employees that we are giving her across the board a 9% increase. I think that's erroneous. We're giving her 3%. We're giving her 3%, and then that was retroactive, and I think that covers it.
If I could just clarify, in terms of salary, the amount that's articulated in the amendment to the contract is exactly the same amount as was provided to all other city employees effective 2015 and 2016.
Right, and I just want to make a comment, too, that the other city employees are actually collectively bargained and belong to a union, so it's comparing apples and oranges. It's a whole different thing, so. Anyway, on item 7D, any more discussion or action? Ken?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve item 7D. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, Carrie's three to two. Carol?
Item 7E, adopt a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a lease purchase agreement with JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., to finance the five-year term lease purchase of fire apparatus in the amount of $1,873,846.
Marty?
So the reason why I asked for this to be pulled, because it's a lot of money, and it's actually a good thing that was happening, and I think that it's been a while since maybe the public was aware of what this action really is doing. And if I could maybe ask staff to just give us a brief explanation on what we're doing and what a great interest rate we're getting on the loan amount.
Yes, so we are replacing a 1991 fire truck, and I may need Chief to kind of help on some of this, and a 2000 fire tiller truck. We did do the proposals, and we did get a very, very good interest rate. I mean, this right now is not set, it's sort of like when you do a home loan, you don't set it until you actually get closer to when we're going to take possession of it. But I just wanted to make sure that the lease was in place so that if we were to get it earlier than what they're proposing, that we're ready. So I'll let Chief kind of tell you about how the truck that's being replaced and some of that.
Good evening, Mayor, honorable council members. Yeah, you guys, you all made a choice back in December to actually purchase two vehicles, two apparatus, a replacement of the tiller truck and the, one of our most, our oldest engines, which is in reserve right now and actually out of service. It's a 1991 engine. What'll happen when we do purchase the next engine is that particular engine will go to Station 51 and be the new Engine 51. Engine 51 will then go up to Engine 52. Engine 52 will go into reserve. We have two reserve engines right now. Currently, like I said, the second reserve, which is a 1991, is inoperable right now, and it'll just be sold, hopefully, in some open market.
Okay.
Sure.
Any more discussion on 7E?
Real quick, I was also going to mention, we talked about the interest rate, but also by the staff recommendations and council's action, it is saving, cost savings of approximately $85,000 by purchasing both vehicles. Not that we're going to get them on the same day, but it also is an additional savings at that point, too. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or action on item 7E?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve item 7E. On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7E's passed. We'll get right onto public hearings. There aren't any public hearings this evening. Item number nine is public comment and item's not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council?
Robert Rico, 7th Avenue. I just had a question. Is anybody going to mention the activity at 10 o'clock Saturday morning at Posse Park?
Good point. You just did, but yes. Yeah, let me just, let me just say that we were dedicating the mosaic at the Caltrain site this Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m., so everybody's invited to attend. You can kind of get a glimpse of it if you drive by, but it's pretty spectacular, so please join us. And then at 1:00, there's Children's Day in the park, and I'm sure there's lots of other things going on, too, but it's going to be a busy day for the council and the City of San Bruno. Yes?
Ryan Mercni, Canes Avenue. I invite the City Manager or any member of the council to respond to this. If the council wishes to cite the Brown Act, then please post an open letter in your own name to the residents or even email your response to me, and I'll post it publicly for you. Please make the case to justify Ms. Jackson's current level of pay, $230,000 plus benefits. Please justify your intentions, your, well, your action, actually, now, to give her a $20,000 loan forgiveness on an interest-free loan. I'm asking, how much money was loaned to the City Manager? When was she loaned the money, and what are the terms of the loan? While I'm sure being City Manager is not an easy job, I and others have a hard time understanding why she is currently paid the equivalent of Vice President Biden, far more than the governor and other officials, who have greater responsibilities than the City Manager in a town of 43,000. Since you voted for her contract, I'm sure you have an explanation for the residents and will state it publicly and not just hide behind a yes-no vote. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you. We'll get right onto contract of business. Item 10, adopt a resolution approving number one, the San Bruno Community Foundation's investment policy statement. Number two, the transfer of the remaining balance of restitution funds to the San Bruno Community Foundation. And number three, amended and restated articles of incorporation. And number four, amended and restated bylaws.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I think it's fair to say that we're here tonight to celebrate an important milestone, a truly important milestone, for the City Council and the foundation and their ongoing partnership to manage and then use the $70 million in restitution funds that were negotiated by the city. Let's do a quick review. The city negotiated the $70 million restitution fund from PG&E as part of a comprehensive resolution of the impact of the explosion on the city. That would be the entire city. As you know, that was in addition to the $50 million in, that is in the trust fund that is specifically set aside for the work in the Crestmore neighborhood and the city's direct and indirect expenses as a result of the explosion. Many people may not know that those results were achieved without any litigation in court whatsoever and with no claims being filed of any kind. And as far as the city knows, this was the first such settlement in the country in which a city was the direct beneficiary. The settlement agreement provided for the city to form a nonprofit, to receive, manage, and then deploy the funds in the community. The City Council selected a board of seven to run the foundation from over 80 qualified applicants who applied in a public process. In fact, everybody in the city was personally invited to apply via letter. And after several years of a lot of hard work and a lot of time put in, both by the City Council and by the members of the board, the city formed the foundation, and the board started to meet. So they started to hold public meetings, and then ultimately, shortly thereafter, hired an executive director, who is here in the audience tonight, Leslie Hadamea, who you're familiar with. One of the most important things they did was engage a consultant, Public Dialogue Consortium, to engage the community, to provide ideas for how to spend the money. Well, I think it's fair to say, there were more ideas than money. But nevertheless, the foundation moved forward to approve a grant policy, and that's a policy that the City Council also approved. So the foundation is now in the process of making all of those ideas a reality. The first way they chose to do that is by establishing the Crestmore Memorial Scholarship Fund, which will allow up to $100,000 for scholarships, for students to go to college or to transfer from a community college to a four-year institution. In collaboration with the city, the foundation offered up to $200,000 for a new park at 324 Florida, up to $170,000 for pedestrian safety improvements in various areas in the city, up to $300,000 for a community vision plan that would assess the community facility and recreational needs of the community, and then last but not least, up to $30,000 to sponsor the upcoming community day in the park. Most recently, the foundation board selected investment advisors, Sandhill Global Advisors, a representative of which is here in the audience, and she happens to live in San Bruno. Sandhill wrote and approved the investment policy statement that you have before you tonight with the assistance of the executive director. And what that document does is it basically tells everybody how the foundation is going to hold and manage the funds for the life of the foundation. That's the final action that the foundation needed to take before being ready to take custody of the 70, the remaining $70 million in restitution funds. So that's what tonight's action involves. That's what's before you tonight, to approve the investment policy statement, also authorize transferring the funds, and then two additional actions to revise the articles and bylaws. Just want to make a couple of brief comments about the investment policy statement and transfer of the funds. You'll note, if you read the document, which is attached to your packet, that the investment strategy for the foundation ranges from moderately conservative for the long-term endowment of $15 million to conservative for the rest of the money. So I think you'll conclude, as the foundation did, that the principal will be well-protected from any undue or excessive risk. The foundation is looking to ensure that it can fund at least some of the major projects in the community that the community wants with that $55 million in the next seven to 10 years, and then use the remaining $15 million to continue operations and community grants well into the future. The other actions before you tonight really involve just technical amendments to the Articles of Incorporation. You've already done that once, but we needed to do it again, and also some of the bylaws. And those are really designed to reflect the current operational realities of how the foundation is working, both with its board, with its board committees, with its staff, and with its consultants. And as you know, that's been a tricky thing, because as I mentioned before, this is the first time a city has done this, and we're trying to meld the two different universes of nonprofit law and public entity law. And in the challenges that we've encountered, we found the need to amend the bylaws and amend the Articles of Incorporation, to make sure that the foundation can do all of the things that the City Council would like it to do. So we do have copies of all of the documents attached to the packet. That's why it was so long. The executive director, Leslie Hadamea, is available here to answer any questions, and we're pleased to recommend that the City Council approve the four resolutions that will mark this, really, this final launch of the foundation into fully-fledged operations to benefit the entire community. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. We need to do these individually, four separate?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any discussion or action by the council?
I just have one question. On your finance strategy or investment policy strategies, you're talking about the $54 million being spent within seven to 10 years. Are you saying we can't spend it until seven years pass, or it will, it's strategized so that it's not expected to be spent sooner than seven years?
No, it's sort of the outer border would be in the seven-to-10-year timeframe, so it's between now and sort of seven to 10 years.
Oh, okay, so we could, if we-
We can start. If we start making some decisions about some of these community facilities, that money is being conservatively invested, so it is being protected and can be used for those projects.
Okay, great. I'm just double-checking. Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone want to introduce these resolutions?
I'll take the first one. Go ahead and introduce the resolution, number one, approving the San Bruno Community Foundation's investment policy statement.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Who wants to take on the second? Second resolution. It's in the staff report, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to do it. Transfer of the remaining balance of restitution funds to the San Bruno, San Bruno Community Foundation.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Ken, why don't you do the third?
I'll introduce, number three, amended and restated Articles of Incorporation.
What a team. Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Mr. Medina?
Yes, sir. I'd like to approve, or-
Introduce.
Introduce, thank you, the amended and restated bylaws.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
That's it.
Councilmember Rico Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Congratulations. You've done a great job.
I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the foundation. We do see this as a milestone for us, and we're very excited about taking possession of the funds and being able to move forward and doing good in our community with those funds. We also wanted to invite the council and members of the public to our June 1st board meeting, when we will be presenting the first class of Crestmore Neighborhood Memorial Scholarship winners. So we welcome you to come to that meeting and meet the first round of scholarship winners. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Item 11, reported commissioned boards and committees. There aren't any this evening. Any comments from council members? All right, seeing none. We don't have a closed session. We do have a study session, item 14. We're going to continue the study session on the San Mateo County 21 Elements Nexus Study Fee Analysis, Affordable Housing Issues and Potential Affordable Housing Measure for San Bruno. After that, we will adjourn to the next council meeting right here on May 10.